Good evening and welcome to the Orange Board of Finance regular meeting. Today's Monday, September 21st. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. This is once again a virtual meeting in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be held remotely with no in-person attendance. This meeting will be broadcast live on OGAT. I'm not sure how the screens look, but whenever we try to introduce each other live, it doesn't work. So with us this evening is Finance Director John Ciparielli, Vice Chairman James Leahy, Kevin Moffett, Pat Romano, Joe Nuzzo, who's showing up as a telephone, and Deborah Satonic. Now I'm Kevin Houlihan. Okay, so item number three is discussion and vote for air handlers for the Orange Board of Education. They're actually meeting this evening. Chairman Kraut, if we do need him, I guess can run over to where Chris is and answer any questions. But this is an item that was on the capital plan that we received back in February as an urgent need for three total air handlers. One was a five-ton at Turkey Hill and the other were two seven-and-a-half-ton units at Racebrook School. They were 20 years old plus and failing. And then low and behold, we didn't meet on much capital. And with the COVID pandemic, fresh air and filtering has become more, you know, more necessary than ever. So these items have been installed before the schools opened. They have not been invoiced or paid for yet. That's why it's on the agenda. The capital plan had the cost at $43,000. And the actual cost turned out to be, I believe it was Rotolo Mechanical who did the work, $41,047. And what I'd like to do is possibly have a motion to transfer that money to the Orange Board of Education to cover the cost of those items and knowing that at some future date because of the COVID pandemic, we might get 50% of that back. And John, if I'm wrong on the 50%, let me know. I believe that we could get half of it back.
Kevin, point of information, team, I just looked up the capital projects from back in our workshop, back in February 7th, I believe it was. And this item is item seven.
Correct.
At the time, it was one of the priority items of the 11 they presented out of whatever. So just wanted to share that.
And now we, there's a possibility we would get at least half of that money back.
Don't count on it.
Well, when we see some of these other towns put in for COVID?
Yeah, but I got a, I got a email last week from the state, things that we thought we were getting back such as PPE materials and stuff. They're not reimbursing us anymore. So federal government's running out of money and they're backing off on a lot of stuff.
Yeah, well, they had that article, I think we might have shared it a couple of weeks ago, on what towns requested from the state and what they received. And I found it amazing that some towns actually got more than they requested.
The one, the one thing I do say though is there's a lot more money for the education side of the equation than there are for the town side. So it could happen over there. You never know.
So Kevin, we've already sent this, we've already replaced it, right?
The work has been done. It had to be.
Yeah, okay. So we're just saying, where does the money come from? Is, oh, we got it.
We would, we would transfer to the Board of Ed the $41,047 out of the capital fund.
I'm in. I'll make that motion if you want to get to there.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Okay.
Me, Kevin.
Motion made and said, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. So John, with the Board of Ed paying the bill, at least there's, there's a shot versus the town.
I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not gonna.
No, there's a chance. It might be 5%, but there's, there's a chance.
Yeah, I mean, I had, I had spoken to the businessmen there a couple of weeks ago and I thought they had done it. And they had put in for, for reimbursement on it. I didn't, I didn't realize we were gonna be reimbursing them like that. I thought it had changed, but that's fine.
No, if they get reimbursed, then that money will come back to us. Okay. Okay, item number four, this is a, an issue that John may or may not have more information than I do. Discussion and possible vote on repairs needed for the Peck Place loading dock. I don't know whether it just crumbled or it was hit. But the dock is unusable to unload, you know, the supplies, food and everything else to Peck Place School. And the, nothing's been done, but the, the quote that was received from them to repair the loading dock is $24,150. So I talked to the superintendent and the chairman and said we would add that to our agenda, which is on here. John, I don't know if you have any other information or if we'd like to get, see if we could get Bill into our meeting.
I, this is the first time hearing of this.
Joe went out and now he's back. Joe, are you back?
Yo, I'm here. Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, because you were just showing up as being admitted.
Yeah, I'm actually, yes, I'm, I'm on the Zoom now.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Joe.
Hey, everybody.
Okay, so as far as the loading dock goes, John, you were not aware of that?
Not aware of it. If it was hit by somebody, I would think insurance would pay for it.
Yeah.
No, like I said, I don't know what, if it just disintegrated. So maybe we, can Chris hear us?
Chris Kelly?
All right, I'm gonna text Bill Kraut. See if he can.
How did this get on the agenda?
I put it there.
Okay.
By their request, because they've had issues and we didn't meet last month. And I don't know what, how else, I don't know how they're getting the food and everything is. I would imagine since there's no loading dock that's workable. They're, you know, wheeling it through the school some other way. So we'll see.
Yeah, if we could find out what like order of magnitude of money we're talking about, it can't be that much money, right?
No, it's $24,150 to replace it.
Oh.
Because it's a different material than what's there. It'll be sturdier. But I don't speak the concrete. I texted the chairman to see if he can jump on through the town of Orange and add some information.
Kevin, not to go over covered ground, but when we just voted on the air handlers, we voted to do it or to support it, but where was the money coming from again?
Our capital fund.
Capital fund, okay. So is the proposal for this thing, $24,150, is it also the thought to come from the capital fund?
I would think so, because we, we added funds to that account and we, we've never, other than we did some things with the police and at our last meeting, we have not gone through because of the pandemic and done any of the other capital items. Plus, not that we want to spend money at this point, but it looks like, and I'm sure yourself and Joe will get to it, the, our budget versus the actual of the AMITI refund can be.
I just, I just want to transfer the money over to them on this. I'd make them come over and present the bills.
On, on the loading dock?
On the loading dock, yeah. If they're not getting reimbursed for that, they should follow the town procedures, you know. Anything over 20,000 should be a bid and all that should go before the election.
Okay, well, I haven't heard back. So do we want to table that item till later in the meeting? Or, John, you said, how would we, how would we do that? Give them?
I would just, I would just allocate the money out of the capital account to be paid by the town following the town bidding procedures, like we've done in the past for capital.
Okay.
So that would be the motion then, John?
I would say so. Something, if you agree, something of that effect.
Deb, did you capture that or do we need to restate it?
I haven't. We're all set.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Your motion by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Kevin. Then it's my turn.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Second by Pat?
Well, in that case, let me get out of the way. I don't care.
Okay, now, all right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining unanimous? Okay, thank, thank you. Item number five, yeah, we're having fun tonight with this stuff. Discussion and vote on account for storm expenses. This came to me and John through Public Works and the Police Department, Donnie Foyer. Because of the storms, they've, the Highway Department and the Transfer Station has probably spent with the log pile, brush removal and then everything else, about $200,000. And the police with overtime and road crews has spent probably $50,000 out of their current budget. And the discussion on that was, I guess, previously when these disasters would happen, we would not crush their current budget this early in a budget season. And, you know, kind of pay for it out of a separate side account, knowing that at some point we will be getting some FEMA money. And I know, John, you said that it would probably take almost a year to get that, correct?
Yeah, it looks from past practices.
It just.
Kevin, I, I gotta tell you, I don't see that kind of money. I haven't seen any bills from Public Works. And I do have the time sheets from police. It's nowhere near $50,000.
Okay. And the Highway Department overtime and everything?
They've given me absolutely nothing.
So how, who's paying those bills?
They haven't been paid. They haven't been putting them through, other than, other than the guys' labor for the, for the time they worked overtime. They worked for about a week overtime, you know, clearing the roads and stuff.
And I'm sure they had outside contractors helping.
Yeah, and they haven't been paid either. Haven't seen any bills on those. So personally, personally, as I've told you, Mr. Williams and I don't believe we really need this account, that we could track it if they give us copies of the bills where they're going.
Well, we could track it, but the concern is, is they don't, if, if this 250, give or take, is real, they're gonna be very short on certain line items, or they're gonna exhaust with transfers within their own budget and not have money.
No, what, what I said was, we'd keep track of these bills when they gave them to us and we keep an Excel sheet and we give it to you to decide if you wanted to reimburse it or not. That was what Mr. Williams and I thought, but it's up to you. You want to give them my account, you give them account. You just gotta put some money in it so I can pay the bills. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pay a bill that doesn't have money in the account.
What, what have we done historically on this? I mean, this is in the first year we had storms like this.
This is the first time that they're asking for, since I've been here in the four years. My predecessor, they did set up an account for, I guess, Storm Sandy and what was the other one before that?
Yeah, I think that it had been, John, an account had been set up. And I think that's what we're talking about, if I understand the agenda right. Not so much about what the amount of the bills are, 50,000 less, whatever. But whether or not we want to set, the way I'm reading the agenda, and I'll be happy to be corrected, is that whether or not we wish to set up an account for this stuff.
Right. You won't get, you won't get labor in it because the labor has already been paid. The town labor has already been paid and that would, that would be a nightmare to try and move that out into another town.
Let me ask you a couple of questions then, since you brought it up. FEMA is paying money. Does FEMA pay for the labor as well?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so my idea is this, if we're dealing with FEMA and we want to know how much money, assuming we're gonna get it, whatever time period I hear Kevin say something about a year, I would think that I'd like to know that it's $425,500. And everything that's in that bucket is what we're expecting money back from FEMA. Now, I don't know how you do that in accounting basis, but from a lot, from my point of view, from a logic, from a management point of view, it just seems simpler if we just have it, whatever we're going to be reimbursed, because of the situation from the storms, because of the extra costs involved, including extra labor, have that be all in one account so that we can then say, okay, we know we got that coming from FEMA, even if it's, you know, September of next year. That, that's the thought I have and I'd be happy to listen to other ideas, but that's.
No, you're, you're right. I'm just telling you, it's too late to do it for the labor. You can put any, you could put any other bills that we get from now on, but labor is already in their regular accounts.
Okay, but hold, hold that thought, John.
Yeah.
The labor that were already been spent for the, for the cleanup that we just said would be applying for FEMA on, will, will we be getting money back? Are we planning on getting money back from FEMA for that labor?
Oh, I'm gonna put it in, absolutely.
Okay, so we'll have to quantify it and I, I think, I, I think that's where Jim's going, right? I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I, his, his thought process and mine, I think are the same. And if we have, say, 20,000 in overtime on there, whatever the number is, that would have to come out just because we're gonna submit it to be reimbursed from FEMA.
No, doesn't have to come out. It could stay where it is and I could still submit it to FEMA.
Right, but we'd have to add more, we'd have to put more money in that account if we wanted to make them whole.
Correct. Correct. You'd also have to decide whether you want to make them whole for their regular working hours, the 40 hours during the week.
No.
So you're gonna, you're only gonna reimburse them for overtime then?
Well, if, if, maybe I'm wrong, but if they, those, if the guys were all gonna work 40 hours and get paid X dollars, whether or not there was a storm.
Right. But I'm gonna put that into FEMA because.
Yeah.
They, they, FEMA would cover 100% of the, even the base salary?
They'll, they'll cover something. I'm not gonna say 100%, but they're, they were, they were off what they normally do because of the storm. So I'm gonna put that in, try that in. I've never, I've never done a FEMA thing before, so it's gonna be new to me too.
So John, how are you gonna come up with the figure to request from FEMA for the, for the salary amount?
The Police Department's already sent me their time sheets with the amount. So I have theirs already. That's why I said it's nowhere near, Kevin said $50,000. I did a spreadsheet today on it. It's more like 5,000 what they've given me so far.
Well, I think that one of the major items was, was outside help, no?
That's for the Public Works.
Well, I thought Donnie Foyer's group was the one that was, was incurring a lot of the bills or.
That's Public, that's Public Works. That would be Public Works. They had to hire tree companies to trim the trees on the road. They have to hire somebody down the dump to get rid of the big pile of brush. So those, those are the costs that he's incurring there.
Yeah, the 50, he had noted as Police, Fire and other departments, so. I personally can't speak to, you know, we know the Orange Volunteer Fire Department was all over. And if the other, you know, the, if Jamie was out there and, you know, the, the fire marshal was, if they incurred costs, I don't know.
All, all departments right away were sending an email from me telling them if they incurred costs of the storm, they needed to give me copies of those costs so they could be submitted. So far, the only ones that's done it is Park and Rec and Police.
And how was Park and Rec?
Park and Rec used their maintenance guy to do some trees and, and the ball fields and.
Saw some photographs.
It wasn't, it wasn't a lot though. We're not talking a lot, a lot there.
So what are we talking about putting into the account then to reimburse? The outside services?
Outside services.
Well, my viewpoint of view is still to put everything into the account that we're wishing to get reimbursed, which would be outside services and any labor that we incurred because of the storm, which we would be reimbursed. So that, that account directly replicates what we're expecting to get back from FEMA.
Jimmy would, like I said again, it'll be very difficult to move the labor, very difficult.
Well, all you have to do is credit it.
No, it doesn't work like that. There's, there's all kinds of reports where that labor goes into, the labor would have to be credited out and, and then backed in. It's almost like doing a payroll. It's not easy.
From, from an audit perspective though, if FEMA audits, how are we going to show?
I have, I have the time sheets with the amounts on them and I'll have an Excel worksheet with the amounts. Also, with the labor, you don't have the benefits in the same spot. Our benefits, if you remember, are in a benefit thing. So the FICAN and all that is in a different spot. So you're, you're not gonna move all, all that also.
Is the question really accumulating, not necessarily putting the money in the pot, but just accumulating all the charges and that's presented?
Well, you.
Are they asking for money to be put in the pot or just, how do they actually want this to go?
Now, what I'm saying is if you open an account, you have to give me money to allow me to pay those bills. I can't pay a bill out of an account that I don't have money to cover.
Right.
Or, or once you make it open, you're gonna open an account and say, just pay the bills and we'll settle up the money later. I, I'm okay with that too.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking the, the town is obviously liable for those things coming in, but you would have a list, the, the account would be how the money gets paid. But I guess, I guess the question is, are these departments looking for, say, this emergency fund, you know, storm fund or whatever, to take a chunk of money out of our current budget, townwide budget, and put it in there? And then who would control that budget? Could, could Public Works go in there and say, I want to do this and I want to do that? Or does everything just have to be storm related? I think a control, you know, I don't know if you want to start giving individual monies to, to the departments on the side.
No, I agree. I think this would be, it would only be storm-related bills so that they stayed out of their current operating budget for, whether it be, you know, cleaning or the, the, the normal maintenance, repairs to their own vehicles, you know, sand and saw, anything that they, they would need or wherever their trans, if they had to transfer this money out of their current budget, they'd have to be moving, shuffling line items around it then, you know, come spring, those, those lines or, or earlier could be depleted.
Yeah.
And it's because of the storm, not because of mismanagement on their side.
Right, right.
My other problem with this is, this is an operational issue. And I don't even think this is a, a board issue for you guys. I mean, this is how we keep the accounting here, but if you want to.
I think it becomes an issue if we have to, knowing, knowing that, we all know the storm. I mean, I had no power for six days or five days. It hurt and there was a lot of damage and the work was done. It's done.
Yeah.
And that was a completely unbudgeted item. Now, if we were another town, we might be up the creek because they, some of them don't have a fund balance and I don't know how they would go about, they'd just have to make cuts or go into, you know, be a deficit like some of them do.
Right.
But in our case, I, I don't think because of this incident with that, we want to harm our departments this early in the budget year. Especially since we were declared a disaster area and there is gonna be a FEMA reimbursement at some point.
So I guess it comes down to how much do we want to put in this fund?
Well, it's not, I think it's really right now. Do we, are we going, if I read this right, it says discussion and vote on an account for vote expenses, I mean, if storm expenses, isn't saying that it's 50 grand, 100 grand or whatever else. There may be, so that's the issue I read as the agenda.
John is saying that he can't have an account without money in it to charge against.
Well.
The question is if you have.
That's just been done for the last 15 years the other way.
Yeah, I know.
Way to do it.
But I think, you know, the, the memo I got from Mr. Foyer, you know, it came up with, like I said, the 250,000. I, I don't know, you know, based on what John's saying, it's not that high. But this is an issue where we, we could, we could, and I'm not suggesting this at all, so don't, don't stab me. But we could put a million dollars into this account, as long as the stipulation is it cannot be spent on anything but these items. And if 50,000's spent, then that's what's spent and we, you know, seek FEMA reimbursement for 50,000. So I'd be open to, you know, any amount to start because we could always change it.
Change it, yeah.
We could raise it at a future meeting if all of a sudden, you know, John's like, oh boy, they, well, they got all their bills together and it's worse than we thought. Or, oh, it wasn't so bad. But that money can't be spent on it. They cannot use it for anything other than the storm-related expenses.
Oh, Pat and Kevin, I think you're educating me. So to be able to open an account, we'd have to have a budgeted amount of money. Is that what you're saying?
I think that's what John was.
Yeah, that's the judge, because he can't pay with, there's no, there's no cash.
Right, you're gonna have to move money out of some account or somewhere to cover it.
Okay, and it's at, at best, an open question as to how we'd get labor into that account.
Well, I'm, again, we're not gonna, we're not gonna put labor in it. I just can't do it. I can't do it.
Well, I'd love to know how it was done in the past.
Well, you, you could document, you could document the money, so that's what's gonna be submitted to FEMA. But then you would still pay it out of the, out of the salary account. And then when we get to that point in the year where they, you know, they're starting running in the red, then what, then we, you know, then we reload on that account.
Correct, that's what I agree.
What you're gonna submit to FEMA is just gonna be the total expenses, not necessarily everything we're gonna pay out of that.
Right. Yeah, what I could do, I could give you next month what we paid in labor and you could, you can move the money and you could transfer money into those labor accounts next month if you want.
Right, from this account.
From that account.
If we set it up.
Okay, I think the major item, if I'm reading my text messages right, the major item is not the labor or the overtime. But at least in, in some of the departments, perhaps the one we've just been talking about. So I'm good with whatever you guys think about doing, but I am highly curious how we could have been doing this one way many times over the 15 years I've been on this board. And, and now we are unable, or maybe.
I'll tell you what it was. I'll tell you what it was. My predecessor did it without the money in the account.
Oh, okay.
And I won't do it because it's illegal.
Yeah, no, John, to John, no, this, this is why I came to the board, because what John says is correct. It was just done. We didn't know it was done. We weren't told. We were all here with, with Al, God rest his soul, but he just did it.
Okay.
And John. And John, you know, we're fortunate to have John. And, and he's, uh, yeah, he, he, like you said, he, he won't do that. So we'd have to say, you know, we wanna set up this account with X dollars. You know, to, to pay these, you know, unforeseen bills out of and, and then to Kevin.
So Kev, even if we set up too much money, a hundred grand, let's just say, fifty grand, pick it up. Even if, you know, the only thing we're gonna pay out of that is a legitimate expense from the storms.
Correct, that'll be FEMA reimbursed.
Won't be reimbursed. Okay, so I've already done two motions, so we already know the motion.
I think should happen is that your group should review the expenses on this account.
Monthly.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get any new ones in the future, right? I think once we review them, we should have them all, unless they come in.
They may come in in dribs and drabs.
All right, so Deb, next step, a, a recurring agenda item for, uh, 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 to review the count. Yeah, storm expenses.
Storm account, yep.
All right, so we need a motion and a dollar amount to.
Without a dollar amount, it's hard to make a motion.
Now, they, the number that was given to me was two fifty. Uh, based on what John says, that might be high, but based on the fact that, um. It can't be used for anything else. Uh, it's gonna come through that account. Those bills are gonna have to be, you know, looked at and said, okay, they were storm related and then paid. I, I don't have a problem. Um, if we went too high, or if, if it, we, we, you know, split the difference and we look at it, we put so much in there right now and then. See what happens next month, um. You know, what, what does everyone else think?
I think two fifty is a good number, uh, uh, Kevin and Pat. Uh, I think it would be a slight tad bit high, but I think for right now, let's make it be high. But we already have controls in place on what we're gonna spend it on and that's what John's gonna take care of. So we're just gonna review it every month and, uh, if it turns out to be one seventy-five, then we only spend one seventy-five. God bless.
And, and who do these, the bills come into? Do they come into your office, John, or do they go to, uh, the highway department?
No, the highway department and then the town engineer has to sign off on them and then they toss. You just, in that motion, you need to say where that money's coming from.
I, I think at this point, it would have to be a transfer from fund balance.
Yeah.
I, I would say in that amount, yes.
And then the FEMA reimbursement and any unused funds would go right back into fund balance.
Right, okay. Hi, Joe.
Hey, Kev.
Joe, did you make that motion?
I'll make that motion, sure, sure. If you'd like, or I could second it, whichever you prefer.
Well, we need someone to make the.
I'll make the motion.
Pat, make it, I'll second it.
Okay, okay, so it's two fifty. John controls it, we review it. Money goes back, comes from fund balance and goes back to fund. Something like that.
You have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. All right, um, item number six, AMITI update. Mr. Nozo.
Everyone. Hey, Mr. Chairman, how are you guys doing today? Uh, Jim, you wanna share a screen? I don't have to, I mean, I have, it's gonna be short and sweet for the most part.
Well, why don't you do what you got?
Okay, so we had our, we had our AFC meeting last Monday. And as you, as we all saw, the, uh, the balance was just under two million dollars or one point nine eight six surplus. Now, when that is added to the four ninety-five, four eighty-two of the one percent. Which is allocated in the transfer count line fifteen of the statements. In addition to the five hundred and fifteen thousand, oh seventy-seven, end of the year expenditures. The total surplus is just under three million dollars or two point nine nine six, seven nine three. So we had a conversation on last Monday with this. Uh, I did speak to First Selectman Zoli about this. And. I voiced my displeasure with way I, in addition to Jim and the Board of Finance. Of way, I voiced our displeasure about the way the budget has been going the last several years. I mean, the three million dollar surplus, I understand how it went down. Uh, and Jim Zoli said, you know, we probably have to cut this budget back somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple of million dollars. And let them play with a million dollar surplus. Uh, and then allow them the one percent for certain projects or, or some extra money as they would need. Uh, throughout the year. So we, Jim and I had that conversation. I voiced my concerns to Superintendent Byers, Terry Loomis. And they listened, they heard us. I said, you know, year after year, we're, we're overtaxing, uh, the residents of Orange. And it's not, something needs to change. And we've been talking about this for years. And, you know, we've just, I was pretty firm with them at this point. Uh, spending the money, they increased the, the medical reserve to thirty percent or twenty-five percent, which was unnecessary. We all said that. They still did it. Uh, so I'm not sure how we're going to handle this going forward, but I'll let the AMITI Board of Ed takes a firm stance with this budgeting process. And nothing is going to change. And the other thing too, uh, just to let you guys know, we did vote on the one percent. And I'm, I'm generally okay with the one percent as long as the rest of it comes back to the town. But then they already spent another half a million dollars for the end of the year expenditures.
Yeah.
Uh, so the vote on that one percent was three to two. I voted for it, uh, because again, I think they should have some extra money and they were looking to use some of that money to fix the roof. Versus having to bond and pay interest on that money. Uh, but generally, I'm okay with the one percent, but maybe we need to. Three million dollars annually consistently is, is a problem. It's been a problem for a while as we have voiced in the past. Uh, but, uh, the, they haven't really taken our lead on this and the AMITI Board of Ed has not taken our lead on this. So I'm not sure how we're going to make any changes with their budgeting process if we can. Uh, but, and, and by the way, the five fifteen end of the year expenditures consisted of. Uh, two twenty-nine increase in the self-insurance fund, as I just mentioned, increasing it from twenty-five to thirty percent on the reserve. One eighty-six, a thousand for COVID-related expenses. And then a hundred thousand dollars to cover the cafeteria's deficit. So that's where the five hundred, five fifteen came from.
Then there was money they moved into IT for this year, right?
IT monies as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the three million dollar surplus, that's the number.
Is, is this another year where, um, their surplus was more than the actual increase in their budget from the previous year?
Oh, hell yes.
To be noted, Kevin and company, the, the, uh, budget was approved at two point four nine. We recommended a two percent increase and what we see now with the surplus, I think they could have easily gone to a two percent increase. Not again.
Zero.
Zero.
Zero, or zero, but they could have done two percent to satisfy us and they chose not to. Uh, and they're at two point four nine and they're the three million dollar surplus on top of that. So, right, it's been a constant problem. I'm not sure what else we can do. Uh, but if we don't get the AMITI Board of Ed on board, it's not much we're going to be able to do at this point. And, and that was basically, that was the main, main topic of discussion, uh, of the evening.
I'd like to, uh, at some point when it's a natural break in the action. I'd like to comment on some of the things Joe just mentioned.
No, that's, this is it.
Yeah.
Okay, and in order to do that, I'll just share my screen. Okay, thank you. This is the, uh, note I sent out on Saturday morning. Uh, it looks like eight twenty-five AM. This was the Saturday of September twelfth. After I received the, uh, we received, and I don't know how many of you are on that distribution. Uh, from the superintendent, I know Joe and I are. Uh, and it's what you receive every month from me, uh, I forward them off. It's a Word document, as you can see on the screen there, and an Excel document, and in this case. And what I'm gonna open up in a second is that PDF document. Um, first of all, a, a reminder for all of us about what a surplus is. A surplus is when you have a budget of fifty-one million dollars. You are saying, I'm going to spend that fifty-one million dollars for these particular items. That's why I budgeted for that. When you don't spend it all. And then you decide to, to casually spend or even non-casually spend, so let's just say you have a four million dollar. Surplus. And you spend a million dollars of that. That does not mean, wrong answer, that does not mean you have a three million dollar surplus at that point. There was nothing in the budget what, saying they were going to spend one percent. Of their total budget. Which was roughly fifty million dollars. So it'd be five hundred thousand. Joe has a number higher than that. One of the other documents had a number just slightly lower than that. That does not mean that when you take that out, your surplus is lower. Because you didn't budget for that. Had you budgeted for that, it would have been in your budget. It would have been voted on by the people who say. Yeah, that's a good use of our tax money. We're for that or we're not. And that's, and, and last year we didn't have a vote, but that's the process that we go through. So I think we have to emphasize to particularly our citizenry. Surely our AMITI Board of Education members and even ourselves. What a surplus is. So you can see on this document, what I sent out that Saturday morning, that all of you received. That at that moment in time, my best guess of where they were was the, in the Excel document. That you have attached here, that's the one point nine five, oh, seven, 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 which they then call surplus. So anybody historically goes back and say, oh, I wonder what the surplus was for that particular year, nineteen, uh. Uh, nineteen, twenty, uh, they would say, well, it's right there in the Excel document. No, it's not. No, it's not. Because what they've done in the Excel document is actually take out of all of the categories, things that were not budgeted. And spending it somewhat, something else. That's very important to understand. Now, when you go to this COVID document, which. Was distributed. Let's take just a small peek at what they spent, what that point in time was called. Um, let me just move this so I can see it better. And take a look at what they decided to spend money on because they had extra money. A surplus. And remember, it wasn't just because we stopped teaching in March. That we have this surplus, cause we've had two and a half, three million dollar surpluses before. Take a look at that first line item there. We are now going to spend two hundred and fifty-seven thousand and eighty dollars. On items that we cut out of our budget request for this current budget, budget year, and now we're gonna throw them back in. Meanwhile, they'll be trying to say to people, us. Representatives of the, of, well, how are people in town to pay taxes? That they had a two point four nine percent increase. Wait a second. Two point four nine percent increase, but that's after you cut out these things. Now, you're gonna, you're gonna get them anyway. Sounds like a higher than two point four nine percent increase there. So, other than getting verbal overlay. This is a document that does not, was not used in Excel and in an earlier version, the numbers didn't add up. Both Kevin and I. Figured that out when we tried to calculate it. It was only off by a little, but the point is it was off. But it doesn't have on the right an explanation for these. The worst form of communication is verbal communication. There's no documentation. And you can see here, maybe all of these good, these categories were good and just, right? One of them has to do with the medical reserve that Joe, Joe mentioned, that two twenty-nine, three eleven, that actually raises. What is the category, Joe, from twenty-five to thirty, the, uh, certain?
Medical reserve.
Medical reserve. Remember, our professional in medical reserve said it should be fifteen percent maybe. And we got double that. So you can see the other things there and there is the one percent capital and non-recurring.
Let me interrupt you one moment. Now, that one point five million was actually, aside from the four ninety-five, it was, it was the five fifteen. Which they, which actually was spent. So it was a million dollars, not the million five. So this was prior to what they, what the final year end, end of year expenditures were. And they included the self-insurance, the COVID-related at one eighty-six and the cafeteria. So some of those were not spent. It was still, it was still a million dollars that were spent, it's not the million five.
The million five included the, uh, one percent fund.
Yeah, but, but the actual expenditure number, and I, I confirmed it was five fifteen, oh seventy-seven. Uh, based on our, on the AFC meet, AFC information that she sent us last week, a week and a half ago. So still, it's still a million dollars. So we had, we had a million, four, million five, but that number was not, was actually not correct. It was a little bit less, it was a half million less. Per the updated information she sent us for last week's meeting.
Is that a document that got distributed?
Yes, it's, it's in the AFC package, Jim.
Is that a, a document that got distributed? In what I'll call a natural format rather than a nat-, a native format rather than a PDF?
Well, the, the five, the five fifteen, I found that number from, let me just see here. You know, when they, when they do the overview, uh, and the details behind the financials.
Right.
It was in there, the five fifteen. I confirmed, I talked to them about it as well. And I can't find it right this moment, but let me see if I can find it here.
Jim's email that he called up with the COVID nineteen impact is, is dated from the, from the, um. AMITI Superintendent on, on September eleventh.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think the end of the year numbers were just the five fifteen plus the one percent. And we, we did have it spelled out. Let me just see something here.
But I think if I'm not mistaken, back earlier in March or February, didn't they spend money for those? Things like Tim said, they took out of the budget, the, the IT stuff and there are quite a few other things. That, that raised at around three and a half million or even higher for the year.
It's, uh.
Yeah, they did a lot of infrastructure. They, they spent it while they were coming to us and that was my argument with their budget back when. Was that their five-year technology plan, even though they already spent it a year ahead of time, didn't change. It was like, that didn't make sense to me back then, um, cause the fifth year should have dropped off, but it's still there. And, uh, and they paid it now. And I, I thought either the current year we're in, since we've paid it ahead of time, shouldn't have an expense, but it still did. And so did all the other years projected out, so I, 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 I'm just at a loss on that myself.
Yeah, um. Joe, the reason there's a difference is when they did this on the one percent, four ninety-five and the number you've been quoting. Um, i- 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 it's because they were looking at one percent of a budget of a prior year's budget when they threw that number in. Rather than the budget year in which they happen to be recurring. The point for us is. What I tried to articulate in this email, and that's right over here on the left. You can see from the Excel file that there was this almost two million dollars. You can definitely see that they said, whatever that number is, it's close to one point five, right? And, and whether or not this categorization of this fourteen ninety-eight, two, two, three. Which is the number you see at this, the bottom of this end of year purchases document, all right? And that I have listed over here. Right, is. That's money that they are spending, so this. that's money that they are spending. So this surplus is clearly rising towards three and a half million dollars. There's just, there's just, this is just basic math. Then there is the issue of overtaxing our residents. And it isn't, you know, if it was a one year thing, it would be one thing. Remember last February, when I asked for that just one basic chart? And I just showed you all of us and them that in the last ten years, their surplus was higher every year than what they asked for an increase. And that that's just beyond, that's beyond. What that means is, and I can get the PowerPoint document if you like to see it, is that in every single year, oh, we can't go lower than whatever, whatever percent. Or the other argument, it's such a small percentage increase. And yet that amount of money that you're asking for an increase is dwarfed by the by the surplus that you have at the end of the year. There's no common sense going on here. And I suppose that's why Jimmy is going to have the conversation he's going to have with the superintendent.
There. Me, I was meeting her this week.
That's what I got. I'll get off this.
You know, just quickly, one last statement. On page twelve of her, the twenty twenty one forecast in the AFC.
Which document?
She sends she sends the forecast behind the financials in the AFC packet.
All right.
On page twelve, she has fiscal year twenty twenty, which which there notes the five fifteen and end of the year purchases through June thirty.
Okay, just let me catch up with you, Joe. I'm very eager to learn what you're saying. So here's the here's the thing. So here's the packet. And what page again?
Page twelve after the financials.
Twelve?
I don't know if it's twelve there, but scroll down, let's see. All right, keep scrolling. It's after the financials, page twelve. Yeah, okay, keep going there, right there. So that's page one there. Go to page twelve.
Oh, it's the Word document.
The Word.
We just opened up the Word document. It's a lot easier, Joe.
Okay. Comes over as PDF. He has a Word doc.
Yeah, well, it's it's buried in the in the PDF as well.
That's twelve, page twelve there. Yeah.
What's on the on the page?
The fiscal year twenty twenty, end of the year expenses.
Whoops. Must not, I must have went by it.
Says twelve on her page.
I'm having a hard time seeing this, Joe.
Eleven is twelve. They're coming up. Okay. So the bottom of page twelve, it's our. You're on fifteen. We're already going the wrong way.
Wrong way. Thank you, Joe.
Right there.
Okay.
The bottom of that page. Fiscal year twenty twenty, right there. Million nine fifty plus the five fifteen plus the four ninety, actually four ninety five, yeah, four ninety five. Four, four ninety two, four ninety five. So that's that's where that number came from in the end of the year purchases. So a little less than what she originally predicted.
Would be great if the Excel document would have something that kind of.
Yeah, it wasn't in there exactly, but she explains it right right on page thirteen.
Well, there may be words here. I I don't know if I'd go so far as.
The 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 thing I like that's highlighted here, not to interrupt you two gentlemen, is and it's in bold.
Yeah.
The monthly forecast for May twenty twenty, blah, blah, blah. The change is eight hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty two higher. So in June, the surplus jumped eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars after spending some of that money earlier. What would it really have jumped? And that's where Jim always, you know, shows us, you know, January, February, we know. And and this, if they didn't spend some of that money on technology or other projects, the change at the last month of the year would have been an additional million dollar surplus. I guarantee it. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Can you scroll down? I'm curious as to the COVID justification.
Yeah, they had COVID expenses totaling was one eighty six, Pat.
Yeah. Although in the in the other spreadsheet, they said all of the additional expenses were COVID related, which yeah, they've got two ninety six COVID claims, additional purchase services are lower. I just, I'm 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 personally a little troubled about throwing everything in the COVID garbage can. I think it's a it's a convenient excuse for this year.
Big excuse.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to, we have to fix this somehow. I'm not sure what we do. We've been trying for years. And I'm not sure what else we can do besides getting the ABOE involved, but it hasn't worked. So I'm not sure where we go from here, but.
I think it's got to be a concerted effort from the three towns boards of finance, the three first selectmen and selectwomen, and the local boards of education who get hurt when AMITI's increases are so much, you know, like this year, you know, we asked them, COVID, don't add positions, and they did anyway. That was a, that that's just, you know, this wasn't the time to do that. They did it anyway. And we've talked about that enough, but, you know, I I think it's going to take a concerted effort from from more because, you know, what what we approved earlier this evening, wouldn't it be great if the Orange Board of Education had these surpluses? They wouldn't have to come to us. They just would fix it, you know, but but they don't.
Yeah. And then they'd say it was COVID related.
Yeah.
Yes, you got it right.
John, bad news. The Jays scored two points.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, may I permission to jump off a little bit early here? And just a couple of things. I didn't have any changes to the minutes, but I will approve them as the board recommends. And I'm also in favor of voting to return the excess cost sharing to the Orange Board of Ed. All right, we'll vote as the board will vote, if that's okay.
It's dark. Is there an indoor golf place?
No, no. Dan Gary, Reagan played today, unfortunately. The next day to make two.
Well, I I won't pick on our missing board member, but that's where he may have been.
I'm going to stop screen sharing for this one if unless you.
Joe, Joe, I thank you because as long as nobody else is going to be leaving us, we still have a quorum. So if you if you have something you have to attend to, I thank you for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Finance, and you guys have a nice evening. We'll talk to you soon. Stay healthy.
By the way, point of information. If I jump on a meeting for the Board of Finance and we have like ten agenda items, and I say I got to leave after the second agenda item, but I can tell you right now, before we discuss any item, well, how I'm going to vote on it, is that kind of kosher or not kosher?
Not kosher.
Well, he's got no say in it because he's no longer in the meeting.
But he was sure to do that. So maybe we need, I just need to understand that.
What's that, John?
His vote can't count.
No, no, his input has, you know, but.
I appreciate the input, but I don't know about a vote.
Yeah, no. I'd like to leave to go get a haircut, but I can't do that.
The barber is right down the street from your office.
Well, that's the Orange office. I'm in Branford.
And well, you got to come to Orange.
I've got someone who cuts hair in Branford. I'll refer you.
All right. So item number seven, the Vice Chairman's report, Mr. Leahy.
Okay, everything you didn't want to know about this particular topic. No, no, it's 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 a good news story, actually. And it looks like I have to go back to sharing. So here's my report. It's about this fire truck challenge thing. And I know you've been all on it, but so let's just say that this is an opportunity. The Board of Finance. And so I'll just run through it. I think most of you either, you probably tired of getting my weekly email, but anyway.
I love it.
All right. So here we are, the Fire Truck Fifty K Challenge. And what I have here is what I'll call a super summary. If I can get our pictures of all of us out of the way, maybe I there we go. So for those who haven't been around, it's been, you know, a real activity to try to challenge ourselves or citizens to be involved. Last May, for those who weren't around at the time, at an Orange Board of Finance meeting, we talked about the carnival being canceled and the Orange Volunteer Fire Department, there would be out the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that they that they net from this carnival. So I happened to talk to Jim Ziole about it. I met for the first time Von Dumas, the fire chief. And I agreed to do the project now, the retired, and we called it the Fire Truck Fifty K Challenge. Reason we came up with that name was because they had a payment due in October. They have two payments of October in October, excuse me, in the year. One is in due October of fifty thousand dollars for a new fire truck that they have like a ten year, twice a year payment schedule. Anyway, we created a GoFundMe site. Some people have seen a lot of it, and perhaps some of others have not seen many. We established what I I termed leadership sponsor levels, five thousand, two and a half, and and the two percent club, the one one thousand dollar contributions. But any contribution was the idea was to get people involved, so excited to support our volunteer fire department. A lot of people don't even know we have a volunteer fire department, what we do. We created four signs. Perhaps if you've driven on the dump or past the town green, you certainly seen for tracking and to communicate the message to the citizens. Up some videos, some promotional events, and we generated a whole lot of media support. Major hat tip to Rick Roberts. We were on Orange Live, Channel Twelve, New Haven Register a couple of times, Channel Eight, and a couple of times in the Orange Town News. We track donation progress daily. We maintain daily contact within the project core team, which was Rick, Vaughn, and myself. And I provided weekly updates to the OBOF at all, because I started adding a whole lot of anybody who I got an email address that I wanted to share this with or nudge them with it, I added them to the list. We've had seventeen updates and they're still going it. So that's this process summary. For if you hadn't heard about it before, what we've been doing since May and early June on this Fire Truck Fifty K Challenge. Now, as everybody probably knows that, but if you don't, the carnival is a major fundraiser, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a big, big nut for the overall budget that the Orange Volunteer Fire Department has. They get a grant from the town each year. What is it, John Zifarelli, a hundred and eighty thousand, I think now? So this is a major contribution. And they do events. And so there, as we, I very crudely depicted on the right hand side, their their carnival revenue was on fire, just like when they come to our house when we have a fire, how to help them. This was just a charter that we have some structure, some team champions. I'll take care of the process. And then I wanted to make sure all of you, because we agreed, not as a board, but as members of the board, to support this, and all the money would go to the Orange Volunteer Fire Association and Department. This was totally different from the raffle, and it was something that hadn't been done before. The whole idea of neighbors helping neighbors, I guess the key point I would want to remind people is that this has been going on since nineteen twenty five. So that would mean ninety five years back in the day or in the early days of phones, they would do a phone tree and somebody would call somebody and they had three people to call, three people to call, had to happen fast. And and that's still in, you know, with better electronics still in place today, that spirit. It's something that makes Orange unique. There aren't very many towns. I think there's only two in Connecticut, Bridgewater and Orange, that have a volunteer fire department. So it's a good thing. And we were trying to see whether or not we could get make, you know, get up to fifty thousand dollars on the challenge. Early on, you may have remembered that I wanted to make sure we didn't get into any political mess. So we worked hard, PJ on the Democratic side and PO and Parati on the Republican side. And I made sure when we did the initial launch, Kevin, you were in, Kevin and Kevin were very instrumental as well to make sure both of the town committees had the first crack at it. So then we went into what we called the booster stage of sharing in various ways. But we wanted to get it out to as much, many people as possible. The situation and anybody who wanted to contribute, wouldn't that be great? And then we sent our final thing before we get to the current numbers. We set up a button on the town website. That button is also on the Orange Volunteer Fire Department website. And a click there brings you right to the GoFundMe page. All right. So donation status. Here we are right now. For those who happen to take a peek at this morning's email, we are now up to a hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. This is surprised, pleased me. I've been kind of working on this a lot since since we started this. The three major things, it surprised me because I I thought that most of this would come through the GoFundMe. But as you can see, forty seven thousand, one hundred seventy three dollars is from the GoFundMe site, a significant amount of money approaching the fifty thousand. And but what I didn't expect was that over time, that that amount would be dwarfed by the red piece of the circle, and that was checks. Because we said, well, listen, you don't have to go to GoFundMe. You can cut out the vig and and send a check. And we had the post office box and a lot of people sent in the checks. A lot of people who went and did the raffle would send in money for the raffle tickets and a check for the Fire Truck Challenge. In addition, we had high hopes for a lot of promotions. We got to see, you know, a sizable chunk of money out of there, two thousand, six hundred and eight. But anyway, that's the status as of Sunday yesterday, where we stand. This is a picture of the website. You can see actually it's forty seven thousand, two seventy three, because by the time I went and got a picture of the website this afternoon, someone else had given a hundred dollars. So there's now a hundred dollars higher, but the website hasn't changed. And this I thought was interesting. It isn't a one for one thing, but on the left hand side of this graphic, I daily get up and the first thing I do in the morning is check the site. So I kept a daily log and it's in Excel file. You can see we've had kind of a leveling off on on the last four or five days and the and the sizable startup and how significant was that startup. And then you can see on the right hand side, we didn't get the checks on a daily basis. It's a volunteer fire department and the treasurer and the assistant treasurer were very prompt in getting the checks, but they were also doing the raffle in in July. So there was a little bit of a time delay. So as best as I could do, they sent me the checks, a status now every Sunday, standard work. Bert Gallant does, she's a great lady, and Charlie, also a great guy. He's a treasurer. And and so you can see that right in the middle of July, what a what a sharp jump there was. And again, the remember, keep track of the axes. Again, I I wasn't able to overlay them. So there's a definite better way of communicating it. But I was at least able to give you a picture of how dramatic the front end was on the GoFundMe and how significant the midseason is and the continuation of all our efforts, letters to the editor, articles that come out, or how much they helped out during the storm in the latest Orange Town News, for example. So you can see that it's having an impact, and that's what's driven it up so high. So I just wanted to give you a flavor of of the the rate at which both of them did. But the one on the left is a daily one, the one on the right, I get checks periodically, and now it's consistent over the last six weeks. Every Sunday night, they give me the most recent set of checks. In terms of the awards, I mentioned that and we're we're honing in on it. But, you know, we're just trying to make, see if we could, you know, see if we could get a few people to, you know, reach a little higher. And 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 there were the two percent club, the gold and the platinum. And these were the list of people that spent on the site now for a while. And shout out to everybody who's, you know, stretched it. When you add up all the numbers here, you come up to over $50,000. So you can see that approaching almost half from these 30, 33 contributions made by organizations and individuals and families and businesses to support in, in, in a way that helped out a great deal. We also, and he's getting into the final things, we've created this and again, you know, major hat tip to Rick Roberts. We'd wanted to, you know, have a really classy, this happens to be one for the Foye family. But this would be Kevin, I think you got one, having Moffett, you know, to, to something you could frame or whatever. We also have decals that we sent out. And we wanted it to be as nice as we could make it. I don't know how clearly it comes across, but in the background, that is the replication. It comes out better on the actual. Or maybe it does, it's, it's okay. I guess now I tilt my screen. You, that's the, the firehouse up, up on, next to town hall. And it's the, it's the same picture that's on the website, the GoFundMe website. So we thought it was a classy touch and, and we sent those out.
And that picture, Jim, has more meaning. Because that's the photograph that was taken and the flags hanging across the road that greeted the funeral procession, procession of Vito de Vito.
Oh, really?
Yes. That's when that picture was taken.
Okay. I did not know that. I did not know that.
So that's a fantastic photograph.
Yeah. So that's what you got. I think that's it. These are just, you know, decals. I have one on my car. I, I don't know what to say when I go down to see Chief Gagne, whether it's, I should tell him it should get somebody to get out of jail free card or anything, but I'll get him on that. But anyway, it, it's a nice thing and we've been giving those out. We haven't got them out to everybody, but where, 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 I'm dancing as fast as I can. I guess it's the same. So that's basically my report. I would ever guys, I, unless you have questions, I, I'd be happy to answer those.
No, that's great. Thank you, Jim.
Kevin, if I could say something?
I was waiting for you to, I was gonna say if you wanted a point of personal privilege, I didn't know if you wanted now or later, but now it's perfect.
Thank you. Now it's perfect. Um, and I will probably read this. Um, this is for Jim Leahy. I'd like to take a minute to recognize and personally thank Jim Leahy. The guy in the seat next to me at the Board of Finance meeting for the last few years until the screen stuff. Jim, from the germ of an idea about answering a critical need in Orange that was identified by the Board of Finance in late May, you turned this summer into a successful, and of course someone's calling me now, a successful drive to support the Orange Volunteer Fire Department. Sorry. In a short three and a half months, not only did the Fire Truck 50K Challenge reach its initially stated goal, it doubled it and then some. By today actually topping its revised goal of 120,000 and as of this morning, it stands at 121,216. That's 245% for those of you who love numbers. Jim, you did this with a clear vision, with amazing organizational skills and with enviable tenacity. You led and grew a huge team of diverse volunteers, always keeping us well informed and on the right track. Kudos from me personally. The town of Orange and the Board of Finance are so lucky to have you. And I'm blessed that you're a colleague and a friend. Thank you, Jim.
I wouldn't mind having that.
I'll get it to you.
Thank you, Pat.
As a document. Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Nice, Pat.
I know everybody agrees.
Absolutely. Okay. After that, item number eight, discussion and approval of minutes from the July 20th, 2020 regular meeting. Do we start with John?
Okay. Let's start right on page one under staff. Deb, instead of Paul Britton, it should be Bob Britton. Page two. I think we need to rewrite that first sentence at the very top. Think it should say, Mr. Sifarelli explained that the wet sprinkler system pipes in the attic froze during a previous winter. During, during the previous winter 2018 and damages were extensive. And then on the second line there, residents needed to be temporarily relocated while repairs were made.
How long were they relocated, John?
I think a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
It was quite a bit. They had to go into one of, I think the local hotel for a while. Page four. Under number eight, revenue, review revenue, the first bullet there, the review and expense reports were reviewed for instead of by. And then the next paragraph where it starts with Mr. Sifarelli, I think that should be the Board of Finance suggested a special meeting with the pension board. And I would take auditors out of there, the two separate things. And that's all I had. Jim, you're, you're usually second, like Aaron Judge.
Yeah, I, I, I took the, the initiative to share again so that people at home might be able to see it. I'm going to have to get a better lighting system where I'm sitting right now to be able to read what I'm, my notes. Page two. I circled this 160. Let me see. So page two, under item two, maybe it's, yeah, here it is here. Mr. It felt funny to me that we made a motion for 160K when we had just talked about it, the cost being 162.5. And I didn't remember whether or not actual motion I did make, but I just was curious whether or not we decided that we were just, we made the motion for just 160.
I would, I would change that to 160.
Okay.
162.5?
No, make it one. I don't remember now.
Yeah, I don't have my notes from the last meeting here, unfortunately. Go through my piles.
Hold on a second. I did, I believe I did a a memo to Mr. Williams. If I could figure out how to ace it, the screen here, I could look it up. Give me a second.
All good.
Yeah, remember they had, we had the three options that specified that dollar amount for the motion, Jim. So I don't know the cost of the conversion versus that 160. It's a great point.
The year, the motion was 162.5.
Okay.
So it's spelled the other way.
So it, so that's, as long as they're consistent, I think is where we're going. Okay. So we've, we've surfaced that one. And now I'd like to go to page three, item five. So I have that on the screen as well now. First of all, in the first line under Mr. Sifarelli, a paragraph. Mr. Sifarelli reviewed the current trucks in the fire department. I think it should be fire marshal department.
It should be, you're right.
Okay, good. I ran into that.
Truck, that truck is in also just as FYI.
Okay, good.
Good.
Down in the bold underneath those two bullets, which starts with the words, Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leahy made a motion to allocate. I don't think it's allocated. So take off the D. And right underneath there again, it says for the fire department. It should, I believe, say for the fire marshal department. I had spent a fair amount of time trying to educate a, a person writing an article. I'll leave it at that. One of the promote, one of the articles that had been in the media. And
Since you say that, and everybody knows I'm terrible at writing a grammar, just for the record, it wasn't me.
No, it was an outside the Board of And and so I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sharing everything because they're going to write an article. It's going to be in a, you know, a paper. It turned out to be in a front page paper. So, um, but I was being informed, I guess I would say, or at least a person's idea. That I was being informed that I didn't know that the Orange Volunteer Fire Department had a budget of over $300,000 from the town. And I said, well, I'm here to reform you that I do a lot of work with this budget and they don't. Well, I said, in fact, if you don't believe me, I was out walking in Woodmont. I said, don't believe me, just call up the town hall and talk to John Sifarelli. Tell him I said so and you know, he'll, he'll straighten you out. I don't need to talk to Mr. Sifarelli, I was informed, because I've already accessed the town records. So I then informed that it was probably the fire marshal department you were looking at. And if you get it wrong, you will, we will not be happy with facts not being correct, being published about our town. So I'm a little sensitive to fire department and fire marshal department. Let's just say, okay. Sorry for the story. Last page.
She was using alternate facts.
Not listening to the fact that she may have had it wrong, but and we, we've communicated three or four times since then. So it's all good. The last thing on the night at number eight, Mr. Sifarelli suggested, my point is this. I asked that the recording secretary update the next steps list. I'm worried about, we put on things on next steps. And I think Deb, we've had at least one or two tonight. But we don't have a process by which we review next steps as a matter of course. So I don't have any edit to the notes, but I have a concern and a recommendation that we put on the agenda. Uh, and if you want to make it part of the vice chairman's report, I'll be happy to just call it vice chairman's reports and review next steps. And then Deb, you can just chime in as part of that regular agenda topic. So that we don't say we're going to do something, oh yeah, didn't we say that once? You know, and that we actually go through whatever next steps we have. So that's, that's my thought, John and Mr. Chairman Kevin. On how we, on an issue I see because of that and one way, not necessarily the only way, but one way we could address it on a systematic basis. That's all I got.
And I, and I know the pension board, I believe John notified the chairman of that board that we want to have him at our, at one of our meetings, whether it be October or November. Wouldn't be tonight because we're still in the summer until tomorrow. So we did say fall, but we will definitely follow up with that.
I, I believe they'll all be here and you'll probably need Milliman to give a report and you might even want our consultant that actually oversees how the investments are invested. Mike will do, do it a special meeting some night.
Okay.
It'll probably be by Zoom because I don't believe the Milliman person is able to go out into the, into the universe yet.
No, there's a lot of those businesses that won't allow their people out yet. That's absolutely true.
And a couple of people that are, or at least one person on the pension board is uncomfortable going out still.
John, if we do that, you've mentioned there'd be a presentation, my recommend, my, my strong recommendation, gotta have, whatever you want to say, like to have that, whatever that material is in advance of the meeting, particularly if they're doing it by Zoom. So that we can, you know, kind of give it a peek before.
And if we, if we had a special meeting. I'm not a technology guy, but I've watched AMITI meetings and I think Orange Board of Education meetings where some people are there and some are on Zoom. Chairman Kraut and Superintendent Dr. Scarpetti have said, because their room is so large, we could use the Orange Board of Edu, as long as they're not holding a meeting. If it's a special meeting, we pick a different day. We could use their, their meeting room to have, you know, we'd be more spread out to have, you know, Mr. Henley and our board and then Milliman on Zoom or something if we chose to do that. So.
Is, are we going to our next meeting, Mr. Chairman? Are we going to be live?
I sure hope so.
In other words, in a, in a, in the basement there, a lower level of town hall?
I sure hope so. I'm hoping what's happening in some of the schools and everything else kind of settles down and we don't end up with the, the problems that are happening in Europe right now, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. The only change I, I have to the minutes. Deb, and this is probably completely my fault because I was probably slurring my words by nine 44 at, at night was the gentleman's name was Danny Doheny, D O H E N Y. And so Donnelly's really close and I probably said it that way. So that's my only change. So does anyone else have any?
No, all good.
I don't read as well as the rest of you two.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So move. I'll second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain unanimous. Thank you. Item number nine, discussion and vote to return excess cost sharing reimbursement to the Orange Board of Education. We have a memo from Christine Koch. Date of July 21st. And John, does she pronounce her name Kocherco?
Koch.
Okay. I don't want to butcher it.
Okay. It's the same, same thing we do every year.
It is.
Hey, John. When I, this memo, I got an, well, for me, well, interesting thought, a, a thought came to mind. I'm, I'm just gonna run it here for Zoom so, so that people can see it at home. So here's what came to mind. What they're basically saying is, hey, we budgeted $3,548,764. We spent more than that. So the state gave the town 253,000. Well, it looks like 118 and, and and the overage is, is about the same number for 253,025. Here's the thought. So we're, we're going to give them the money, right? Because it really, the, the money gets to the Board of Education through the town, right? But here's the thought. The thought is, what motivates us to budget high in special education? If we're going to be reimbursed whatever we spent, for example, if I looked at these numbers right now and we had budgeted 3.2 million, we would have gotten back somewhere on the order of 600,000.
Not true.
No?
It's a percentage.
It is a whole formula and, and I can't speak to it if you really want to try. If you really want to try and understand the formula, you'd have to speak to Dr. Spark, Scarpetti over there. But it's, it's not as simple as that.
Okay. I thought it was like 70 odd percent.
It's, 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 it's depends on the number of children, how much, where they go, what their, uh, I think aptitude is, i- it's, it's a crazy.
It's complex. Got it.
Very complex.
Okay. Thank you. So Kev, what do you need?
We need a motion to approve, um, a transfer of 253,025 from the town to the, uh, Orange Board of Education.
All right. So moved.
There's a motion by Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Pat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain unanimous. Thank you. That's all set, Sean. Okay. Item number 10, review revenue and expense reports, or new MUNIS reports. Mr. Sifarelli. What are your concerns?
Uh, I'll type. Where do you want to go? You want to, want to just start with revenue?
Yes. I look at the revenue.
I know. Why don't we, why don't we just go through it page by page and anything you got, I'll try and answer. I think that works pretty good, right, Jim?
Yeah, that's, that's, that works for me.
Yeah, most of the actions on page two.
Correct.
Matter of fact, John, I was able to create that Excel spreadsheet. So if you want to just jump to that, I can, I can share that.
Yeah, Jim and I had a conversation today about taxes and comparable to last year. And we're in pretty good shape right now, I would say.
What I observed here, and make sure everybody's on the same page, I, I, I'm sharing now and, and I'm on page two of your document. So the revenue document, nine sixteen, 2020. And what you have here is real property, personal property and motor vehicle. And then you decided to look at the percentage on the inside, may have had a certain reaction. But then I noticed underneath that you had real property CC, you had motor vehicle CC, you had, um, uh, personal property, you can't see the CC because it isn't, it doesn't go out far enough, but it's the same thing. So I, I called John earlier and then I had a little time, uh, so I created this, this document, which I can send out. Uh, but basically what you're looking at here is the following. Uh, first of all, for these four areas and some of them are very large, one is very small prior year. But they were the more, four that had the CC number in it. And what I was trying to do is I wanted to combine the, the year to date collected. And I made the date off by one day, John. I think it's the sixteenth, not the seventeenth.
Yeah, no big deal.
Give me that hustle there. So you had the 28, 243, 140, et cetera, and I hope I copied them over, right? And then you had the CC numbers, you had a total. And in the same thing for personal property and motor vehicle. And so what I did is I then got a total and same thing for prior year. And then what I did is say, okay, now I've got the, the real total, all right? Uh, because on the document there, since we, they didn't budget anything for CC, how can you, credit cards? Now we know where we stand as a percentage of, of this year's budget for each category. All right. And then what I did, and I have it here on, I happened to go look it up. I looked up, um, Arthur's, uh, sheet from last year, and here it is. I have it on the screen. Um, to see, okay, I know this one, the best we could do is end of, end of, uh, September. So we're only halfway through September. So I just said, well, it's, it's some data. Let's take a peek. So I have 51.7 for real property, 57.6, 94.5, 47, 49.7. So what I did is I just punched those numbers right into this sheet right here. Okay? So if you just move into this zip code over here, you're really in the area where we can say to ourselves, okay, at this moment in time, midway through September of this collecting during a COVID season, we are at 50.9%. How good or how bad is that? Well, last year at the end of September, we were 51.7. So we're pretty close. And that's a very large number. And the rest of the month yet to go. Doesn't say we'll get to wherever we were last year. Doesn't say last year was the greatest year of history. It just says, where do we stand in terms of last year? Similarly, for personal property, we're at 656.3 as compared to 57.8. All right. And by the way, I can send everybody, uh, this document, this Excel file I created. Motor vehicle, not as much. We're at 94.5 here. We're at 90.2 here, but at least we know. And again, we have the rest of the month. All right. So there you go. And again, it's a lower number, but still a significant number. And then prior year, uh, since we had the number, I just did the calculation and we're pretty close to where we were last year. Overall, not overall of everything in the column, but the total of everything in the, in that area. And I think it's right there on your page two, uh, 68. No, I have the right, wrong number here.
Thirty-six.
John, I have it the revised number. I, I, I got, it's 68, 789, 918. I, I went to the revised column, so maybe I should have been in the non-revised column. I don't know. But in any event, uh.
No, you got the right number.
Okay.
You got the right number.
And here's where we are in relation to that, the 36, 801, which you can see if you're, if you're looking at your document, you can see that that's right there, right? 36, 801, 391. So I'm just, I'm just, you know, pumping this uh, i- i- back into Excel manually. So it's, uh, you know, ripe for error. And then that's 53.5. And again, go to Artie's document from a year ago, end of the month, right? What before, okay?
What, what we have there, if I can interrupt you a second.
Please do.
Jim, we have a half a percent we're behind. That half a percent is about $343,000. We also have 17, in, I'll say individuals, because I don't know if they're residents or businesses that did delay their taxes, that filed the affidavit that will be due on October 1st. So we'll probably have a better feel for things next month.
And, and John, to that point too, uh, the line item that's on the spreadsheet, the interest in liens, that, uh, when we take the credit cards and the other, it's still about a hundred and you know, it's probably about 30% collection, but unfortunately, if those poor people were in trouble before the year started, that's, that's probably another hundred and, uh, 30,000. That's going to be iffy going through. Not, 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 we want a nickel and dime at this point. But I, I look at that and then the personal property, as you know, from my emails, has always been a concern um, as to what businesses are no longer there. So we're not, what, what amount of money are we not going to collect? And that would be for Mark to, to tell us. Um, I, I, things we know or don't know, we don't know. Um, but in my opinion, and I think with, with Jim's spreadsheet is excellent. We're better than I thought we would be.
Yeah, I, I think so too. The other thing we're going to have to watch, and I won't know that number until probably the December meeting, supplemental motor vehicles. With everybody being laid off and stuff, there probably weren't a lot of cars that were purchased in that period to fall into supplemental. So we'll have to see if we get anywhere near that number that we estimated this year, the past two years.
But, but on a, on a brighter note, and I'm always the pessimist, the doom and gloom guy. Uh, I will tell you, I, I have a, a client who owns two car dealerships in Milford. And he had inventory issues because I, and now I, I don't know how many people are from Orange. You know, I have no idea if they're from Milford or they're from Stratford or Bridgeport. But they, they ran into invent, believe it or not, inventory issues because people refuse to take the train.
Yeah.
So they were actually had, there, some businesses have, have done better than usual because, you know, uh, this, this, this pandemic and, and.
There's one car dealership right next to Costco there that has a, a overflow lot. And if you notice going to Costco, that overflow lot is just about empty right now.
So we, we might have a surprise on the supplemental or.
Could be.
So.
We'll keep our eyes on it. Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't notice that interest in liens, Kev. Uh, that's at 27% as we can see right there. Uh, and last year that was much higher.
And the unfortunate, you know, because any, anybody who's in that situation right now with their taxes, it's unfortunate, but you know, we're, statutorily, um, we're still going to accrue interest at 18% and the town will get paid at some point in time. Um, I, I, I don't know how the state of Connecticut or any state still has a statutory interest rate at 18% when the federal funds rate is basically zero.
Yeah.
But that's not, that, we, we have no say in that.
Right. She, by law, she has to collect that. Even, even those, uh, individuals that sign that affidavit to October 1st, if they're not paid by October 1st, it's 18%.
Yeah. And it's been that way and the legislature's never addressed it. And, you know, that's, to me, it's just like credit cards or, you know, we could go on and on and on, but.
Right.
借钱 loans, you know, when, 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 when the banks are borrowing at zero and, you know, 18%, whatever, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So I will, as the next step, send out, assuming everybody wants it, I'll just send out this document, uh, tonight. And so you can, uh, I'll even fix this error. I know it just now noticed. Thank you everyone for being kind and not mentioning it. I just.
John, John, I'm looking at page, the next page. Um, and, and our budget for the AMITI surplus was 300,000 and it looks like it's going to be a million.
Right.
I would say that, yes.
So hopefully, uh, any of our shortfalls, which we don't, we, we can't project, but that, that's that's a big plus.
Right.
It's a crazy way to live though.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it affects us.
I could hear Pat's voice because the year before, I think, we originally talked about budgeting 500 and we moved it to eight.
Yeah.
They're like, come on. And this year we were at three because, oh, everything was so bad. Um, and, and lo and behold, even, you know, it's, it's going to be a million, give or take. And it could have been a million, 250 if they didn't do the 495.
Yeah.
It could have been a million and a half if they didn't spend money on the other things that they did. Um, and I don't want to berate that. And, and, you know, Joe's not here. I missed my chance with the AMITI, uh, update, but when, 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 one of the big reasons for the 500,000 that they're keeping is for a roof that comes out of warranty next year after 10 years. I mean, like Mr. Leahy always says, I mean, how many of us change our, you know, redo our roofs every 10 years? Just because it's out of warranty doesn't mean there's anything wrong with it. You know?
Yeah, there's, there's some quizzical thinking. There were even some discussion. I believe it was at a meeting, but it might've been in the meeting or before the meeting by, by one of the members of the board, AMITI board. And they were talking about this has to do with the, uh, field and the field.
Oh, thank you for reminding me of that. So go on.
The, the field at that point in time was going to cost either a million and a half or two million or whatever. And, uh, we all have seen how it's, you know, caught up in whatever it's caught up in now. Um, but I was actually being told that it would be prudent, prudent to, starting now, budget $200,000 a year so that at the end of 10 years, we will have two, $2 million to have a replacement field. This, or a field we have yet to put in. Um, it's a good reminder of, uh, what we're doing. And well, how we examine money and look at money and how other elected officials do. And I'll leave it to that.
That's why they have deficits here. Absolutely right. And, 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 uh, I, I meant to ask Joe this. It's in my notes here and, um, I didn't for whatever reason. With the field being put on hold somehow from there's bond interest in this budget, there's bond interest, interest in the next budget, but that, none of that money's been, you know, I, I, I'm not sure.
The AMITI budgets.
Yeah, what, what's happening with that? Um, they might've issued the bonds and have the money in a bank account, but since the field improvements, all that's been stalled. Um, and, and it takes a greater mind than mine to figure out how, because to me, AMITI is owned by Orange, Woodbridge and Bethany, and I, I don't even understand why that was going through Woodbridge's zoning board to begin with. But.
I think because of the location and that's where the suit came from. From, uh, residence property who, who borders up on the, uh, on the football field.
I, I just, and, and I, I know from letters to the board because I, I followed it somewhat. And, uh, one of the, the people was, is an employee at Yale. But it was my understanding that the field that was being done at AMITI was the same that they put in at the Yale Bowl. And I can't imagine Yale putting in a bad field. So to me, the research was done and I, I don't, you know, that's, that's where somebody else is going to decide this obviously, but the, to stop it. Um, yeah, it, it's just too bad. And I, I don't know, uh, unfortunately, the CIA C canceled the football season, so.
Yeah.
Um, changed anything for this year, but hopefully they can get it rectified and moving forward.
Kevin, I could kind of answer your question on the bonds. I have an email from Terry. I questioned what the interest rate and the bonds were sold at 1.15. So the bonds were sold, I believe.
That's fantastic. The 1.15.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions on the revenue side? All right, let's move on to the expenses. Again, John, I don't know if you have any concerns here other than our storm, which I think we took care of earlier.
I know one spot where we're probably going to go over budget is in the benefits or unemployment. I'll give you a heads up on that right now.
Should we be saving it on salary somewhere else?
Well, we, we did because we didn't run a full camp and we shut down the pool. But all those, all those people that we didn't maintain the salaries all went and collected unemployment, including the youngsters in the day camp in the pool. So we're getting hit with the unemployment claims around. So I know we didn't, uh, we didn't, uh, we didn't cover it. We put 20, 20,000 in the budget and we only have 8,200 left. So I'll just give you a heads up on that now. But I should be able to cover it maybe with money from our negotiated, uh, benefit line in there later in the year.
So I'm looking at this, uh, online now. I'll just share the screen again so everybody can at home. So I'm looking at this employee benefits section, Johnny. And, um, which specific line I am, we, are you referring to, John? I know you.
The one that says unemployment, C O N.
Yeah, I got it. 20,000. I see you down to two. Okay.
The other, the other thing I might say, if we could find our, uh, health department on here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody got the page?
I'm looking right now.
Director of Health, I have page 20.
Uh, that might be, uh.
And that's not a lot there. I don't think that's the right one.
No, that is, uh, that, that's Dr. Moh. That that's Dr. Mohammed right there.
Yeah.
Who's working full time for, you could see that amount of money.
No, I I think, you know, we we've talked about that and I I think there's something should be done. I mean, he's been tremendous.
He's been amazing.
You know? He didn't sign up for this.
No, he didn't. And I gotta tell you, I had a, if I could find the our other department here, environmental, whatever we call it.
Yeah.
Environmental health?
Environmental health, I think it is. I don't know my new codes quite yet, so it takes me a little bit. Okay, on page eighteen.
Yep.
Okay, environmental health. We usually have a director and assistant director. The assistant director left in February before all hell broke loose. So basically, Brian Sokol, Sok Sokowski, can't even say his last name, has been working by himself, this whole department, through this whole paramedic that we're having. They came to me today, him, Dr. Mohammed and Lisa Pimento from the OVNA, the director OVNA. They got a directive from the state to start working on what's going to happen and how the town is going to distribute the vaccination when it comes out. They needed a little money for it and they were in a, they were in a panic. You need a certain refrigerator or freezer for it. You need some other things. So it turns out they need about three thousand dollars right now. No way. So, you know, they had me in a little worry when they told me what they needed. I said, okay, I'll cover it and I will. I will cover it. I have some encumbrances that I could use to pay it and something like that. One of the other things they were looking for was either a portable generator or sometimes a actual big generator like we have here in the town hall to run the building over there. During the the storm we had, they were out without power for a couple of days. And they were, they're trying to make do over there. And at home, I guess both Dr. Mohammed was without power in his neighborhood when he leaves too. So they're going to be asking at some point in time for capital for a generator over there. I don't, I turned them over to Bob Britton to look at the prices of that. It's not that big a building. I don't think we're talking about a lot of money there. But we'll see what happens there.
Well, they only need it, John, for the refrigerator. They don't need it for the entire building.
Well, they're they're talking about the entire building because when they went down without any electricity, she couldn't get to her, her medical files for her patients either, which became a problem in in her lines directly to the hospital for directions on what they're supposed to do for patients that are discharged to them. So it was a little, it was a little problem over there.
Now, are they in the old library, John?
Yeah.
Library, they're in the Clark Building.
So that's the size of a house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying it's not.
You could probably put a generator, propane generator to power a whole building for twelve grand.
That's what I was thinking. You know, you do a house, you do those gen tech generators for about ten grand. I understand in the houses, so, but well, you'll probably hear something about that somewhere down the road. And we may, we may need to give them more money somewhere down the road to implement the shots and all. But we'll take it as it comes. I just want to give you a heads up on that.
If we have a vaccine, we'll find the money somewhere to help our residents.
Now, all we need is to find people who want to take it.
I said that to Dr. Mohammed and he said, rest assured, he's not going to give out any vaccine to the town that he doesn't think is going through the proper protocols. And he said he doesn't see it coming out for quite a while. So.
Unfortunately, I agree.
And actually, I had a doctor's appointment today where I had that same discussion with the doctor and he's, he pretty much said the same thing, so.
But from what I understand, it's the COVID vaccine, whatever it is, will probably have to be kept in a freezer rather than a medical.
Yeah.
Refrigerator.
Because that's what I've heard too, Pat. Yeah.
Yeah.
They're a lock on it.
We have no way to transport it or anything else right now. We don't have the infrastructure to get it to everybody.
All right.
Hey, John, last page here, twenty four. Just educate me. Um, we have a bunch of principal and interest and I'm seeing that we have already paid off, you know, five categories of principal. And I'm noticing that we have, you know, paid off one component of interest. Looks like we pay interest twice a year, maybe if I'm guessing at this rate.
Most bonds are paid, you pay twice a year, yes.
Okay.
Most of them are June and January. We have a couple oddballs that are paid in April and June, I think it is.
You know, so so we're not getting, you know, whatever, zero point percent on money. So, you know, paying principal is a good idea. I just since we're not getting much in it. Is this the way we've been doing it for a long time?
Yes, you can't, you can't, you only certain bonds you could pay off early. And we've done that in the past, like we did, we did it last year. We're actually last fall, remember, we saved about three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I definitely remember.
They they actually in that in that tax bill that was passed a couple of years ago, they actually tightened the rules on that. That made it harder for governments to do that refunding.
Really?
But our, our overseer on that is always looking to see where we, if and when we could do that.
Okay. No more questions on this, so I'll stop sharing unless someone else needs to focus on. Kev, Pat?
Oh, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm fine. Anybody else have any questions on this?
One and one other area, we we may have to help the voter, the registrars, and I don't believe the county clerk. I think he's got enough money to cover it, but they're gonna, they're gonna need, if they could find them, they're probably both gonna need tie or extra people for November.
Yeah.
With the.
But they've had no, we've had no referendums or anything else.
No, no, no. But they're gonna be, they're gonna be overloaded with absentee ballots and stuff.
That's true.
Yeah.
We are supposed to get eleven thousand dollars from the from the state, though, to help cover that. So I'm hoping that will go.
Yeah, I don't know whether state's getting their revenue from these days, but biggest sales tax generators are closed, but
Yes.
Or partially closed, so we'll see.
They did say income tax revenue was up, though, for some reason.
Oh, the situation in New York City has been the best situation for Connecticut in twenty five years, I think.
Conveyance taxes, you name it. Jim, you're dead, you're dead on.
Right.
I mean, who among us, is it just me or do you see three times or four times as many New York plates driving around Orange, Connecticut these days?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I do, I see them all the time.
I had a Milford client sold his house last week for forty thousand dollars over asking price and his asking price was inflated.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
The, you see houses, they're they're turning over in a matter of a couple of days, four, five days, they're going.
Before they even get listed, Kev, is what.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. What a marketing campaign it could have been for us, right?
Yeah, the sad thing is is Manhattan's gonna pay the price. I mean, they're gonna have seventy five percent vacancy rates in some of their apartment buildings. But.
They're gonna have it in their office buildings.
Office buildings too.
Oh, yeah. Big time.
And I I read today about all the hotels that are closing also.
No, it's it's horrible.
Yeah.
So I think office buildings are going to be all over. I think you're going to find businesses that thought they could never do it with their workers working at home, but found out it actually does work.
Oh, no, that's a, that's a, that's a fact. I know some, that that's exactly what's happening. They're reducing their footprint by about seventy five percent. Especially in high rent districts. It's a Yeah, and and we saw, we see it here with the, I I think it was last week or two weeks ago in Milford, the Connecticut Post Mall. They're they're saying in order to survive, they need to convert half of it to apartments. Or some percentage like that. So. Okay. All right. So we're all set with that. I'm gonna add my own point that in twenty five years, we have the volunteer fire departments fantastic. The Orange Country Fair Committee is tremendous. They didn't get to have their fair. It would have been this past weekend. And we finally had a weekend where I could have cooked in a flannel shirt instead of shorts and a T-shirt because it's been ninety degrees on this weekend for almost twenty straight years. And we had the nicest weekend I can remember for for a fair. And unfortunately, we weren't able to have it. So hopefully, this time next year, we have the same type of weather and we can support them as much as we support other organizations in town because they maintain that field, that museum, the gazebo.
Bathrooms.
It it's a great event and it's a great group of people. And unfortunately, it was very much missed this past weekend. Would you say, John?
I said the bathroom was also over there.
Yeah, they built that too. So the fair committee does a lot for the town.
And keep it renovated, so.
Yeah, so they they.
Nice area up there. It's a very nice area. We're fortunate.
That's another area over there. You could see since March is getting a heavy amount of use. I I don't know, Kevin, you live right there. There are tremendous amount of people using the track over there. What access to track, walking around the whole grounds. It's tremendous. The people that are over there now, the basketball courts, their kids play basketball on the courts just about every day over there. The tennis courts are being used. It's really fabulous.
No, it is.
They're holding a lot of the the recreation department, a lot of their exercise classes that they used to hold in the gym are being held outside now.
Correct. That's right.
You know, a lot of, you know, particularly for senior citizens, there's a lot, seems to be a lot of like exercise classes going on. Which is good. That's great to keep, you know, to keep that going. Because you sit around too much, that we all know what happens there.
One of the things I've noticed in the last six months. There's good and bad, everything, right? But the goodness I see in the overall of this is significant. I have never seen so many kids on bicycles.
Yes.
Six months. Now, you can't go three wide on Lambert Road, okay? So we have some learning. But that's not just kids. I mean, I've seen people with baby carriages on Lambert Road. I mean, Orange Center and and Racebrook are actually far more safer roads being a runner. You know, Lambert's the kind of a tricky one. It's not very wide, so.
Do have a little breakdown lane in on Orange Center.
Yeah, you have a little bit on the side there. But anyway, the idea that a kid from any age, seven up through gets on a bicycle, I mean, I'm a city kid from Boston, so to be we used to go up to Blue Hill Ave, to Franklin Park and down into Milton and the Blue Hills and and eventually come home, as long as you're home by five o'clock and you and that doesn't mean five oh two in my father's world. You you learn, right? And you explore. And when I I just get a kick out of seeing these kids on bicycles. I really do. I think it's great.
And I'm inventing an adult snowsuit for everybody to continue walking all winter long, too.
Well, it's thirty eight degrees over at Amity for the seven fifteen run this morning. I'll tell you right now, I was wearing my winter hat.
It's getting towards turning on the heat at that temperature, too.
Yeah, it is. And I usually try to avoid my heat in my furnace until Thanksgiving. But this year, we might not be able to go that long.
I'm usually November first, but.
All right, PJ's not here, though, Kevin.
All right, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Kevin, you're sideways.
It goes sideways.
Don't move.
I motioned by Kevin, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I did my Pat. It was great seeing everybody and hopefully we see each other soon. Adjourned at nine ten. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.